Not saying much. Yeah, Mark, I was already there. No worries, we weren't recording yet.
Okay, well, it is four o'clock out here in lovely Arizona. That must mean it's 7:00 PM in beautiful South Carolina. And I am Mark Allen Powell. We are going to now have the second in a series of four Bible studies on stewardship. This one focusing on stewardship of creation. I'd like to begin by telling you a little story of how I encountered a stewardship message in a an unexpected venue. About 15 years ago, I ended up in a small Texas town with my dear wife, Missy Baby, and there was only one place open that was not a bar, a little movie theater. They were showing a single film, and it happened to be a remake of an old science fiction epic that probably did not actually need to be remade. But in any case, it starred Keanu Reeves as a cosmic exterminator sent to Earth to rid the planet of a dangerous parasite. The premise of the film was that there are only so many planets in the universe capable of sustaining life. Earth is one of them. But one species, guess which one, was rapidly destroying Earth's capacity to sustain life. So some superior tribunal somewhere in the universe sent Keanu to wipe out the troublesome species and save the planet for the sake of the less destructive species. Now, here's where it really didn't make any sense. Instead of just doing his job, Keanu called all the leaders of the world together to tell them what he was going to do. The point of that was never made clear, at least to me. But in any case, all the world leaders met at the United States. Or something like that. And of course, the presidents and the kings and the dictators were all might upset. As I recall, their chosen spokesperson ranted and railed at the cosmic exterminator, saying, "What gives you the right to come here and do something like this? This is our planet. Why are you even here telling us what to do? It's our world. None of your business. It's our planet." And Keanu responded, "No, it isn't." Did you make it? Did you create the soil and the rivers, the clouds, the rain, the plants, the oxygen? Are you responsible for all the things here that make for life? Your planet? Your world? Whatever gave you that idea? Why would it belong to you? Well, and then he fell in love with some earth woman, and things sort of fell apart, as I recall. I'm not recommending the movie, but that one scene, a secular expression of what Jews and Christians and probably Muslims have always believed. God created the heavens and the earth. The earth is the Lord's and the fullness thereof. We don't own this planet. It is not ours. The earth is the Lord's. And we are just stewards of what God has made. All right, last time, we talked about what the word stewardship means. Stewards are people who live in a place that does not belong to them. People who are allowed to use what belongs to someone else, to use it, but not to own it. And in so doing, they're expected to take care of the property that is so entrusted to them. Jesus seized on that image as a way of talking about our relationship with God and with the world around us. He used that image in a number of his parables. Human beings are stewards of what God has made, of what has been entrusted to them. We are stewards of what God graciously allows us to use, but not ultimately to own. This applies to our money, our time, our talents, our physical bodies, our relationships, and of course, to the earth itself. Maybe just summarizing a little bit from last time, two essential points of the parables of Jesus. First, we ought to be good stewards, not bad ones. We ought to take care of what God allows us to use, not waste it or break it or destroy it. We should not do things that harm our physical bodies or corrupt our minds. We should make responsible use of our talents and of our time and of our money. And of course, we should take good care of the earth, avoid pollution and destruction and depletion of resources. That is an obvious point in several parables of Jesus, but it's just one point. There is a second point, probably the main point and the most important one, the simple recognition that we are stewards, not owners. We need to quit thinking that everything belongs to us. It's obvious, but fundamental, and it really does make a big difference. For one thing, I have found it can help us to get beyond wallowing in guilt over our obvious failures. If we simply stick with that first point and ask, are we doing a good job of taking care of the planet that God has entrusted to us? The answer will always be, well, not as good a job as we probably should be doing. We obviously could do better, and we should do better. That's fair, and it's important, but it also can be counterproductive. Because most people just do not need more reasons to feel inadequate about themselves. And if our stewardship message is just, you should be doing better.
See you on Zoom.
If that's all we have to say when we proclaim stewardship of the earth or of anything else, you should be doing better. We all should be doing better. People will nod their heads and agree, but ultimately, it's just kind of depressing and we'll tune out. What the Bible tells us is that God has entrusted us with care of God's creation, and that is incredibly affirming. That's a much better starting point than we should be doing a better job. Start with a positive. We, Jesus says, we human beings are the salt of the earth. And as he uses the metaphor, that's a good thing. We are the light of this world. Both of those metaphors, salt of the earth, light of the world, what they mean is we make the world a better place. And Jesus does not just say that we can make the world a better place, or that we should make the world a better place. He says, we do. To be called stewards is incredibly affirming. What a privilege. So that may be only part of the story, but it is an important part. And recognizing that privilege, I think, is the best place to begin. Now, eventually, I'm going to give you a link with lots of relevant Bible passages and helpful practical suggestions for being stewards of God's creation. But you know, I don't have time in this short talk to give you, I don't know, like 52 Bible passages. So I'm just going to start with, let's say, two. Here are some basic ones from the first couple of chapters of Genesis. Let me see now if I can share my screen with you. I think I can. Yeah, I click that there and I put this here and I click this here. And now you see the passages, don't you?
Yes.
Genesis 1:26. "God said, 'Let us make humankind in our image according to our likeness, and let them,' that is, the human beings, 'have dominion over the fish of the sea and over the birds of the air and over the cattle and over all the wild animals of the earth and over every creeping thing that creeps upon the earth.'" And then just five verses later, it says this, "God saw everything that God had made, and indeed, it was very good." Okay, some comments on those passages. "God created the heavens and the earth." You remember the story. "Let there be light," and there was light. And God created the sky, and then the waters, and the ground, and the plants, and the animals. And then after everything else, finally, God created human beings with one specific purpose. The human beings are to have dominion over everything else. That's what it says in our current English translations of the Bible. It's a curious phrase, and it's often misunderstood what it means to have dominion. It does not mean that the human beings are to subjugate or tyrannize everything in an abusive or exploitative manner. It means almost the opposite. What it means is that of all the things that God had made, God made the human beings and appointed them to be in charge. In charge of what? In charge of taking care of all the other things that God had made. To have dominion means to be charged with taking care of everything else. God appointed the human beings to take care of the rivers and the soil and the plants and the animals. And according to the account in Genesis, nothing else that God made was put in charge of taking care of God's creation. Not even the angels, only the human beings. The human beings were special among all the things that God made because they were to have dominion, which meant they were to take care of everything else. In a nutshell, having dominion means being stewards, living in the world that God made as the only ones entrusted with caring for what God made. Next, we note after saying this, that second passage I had on the screen, God declares everything to be very good. A fundamental principle of stewardship is recognizing the essential goodness of all that God has made. That's why it is sad when an animal species goes extinct. God thought that species was good, very good. That's why we don't want to alter our atmosphere or introduce toxins into the environment. The environment is fine the way God made it. It's good the way it is, very good. You might have noticed that an awful lot of ecological awareness involves concern for preservation. We wouldn't be trying to preserve a world that wasn't good, would we? When you hear an ecological encouragement toward preservation of the environment, you should always remember back to Genesis, chapter one, when God finished creating the heavens and the earth, looked at everything that God had made and said, "It's good the way I made it. It's very good." A lot of stewardship just means keeping it that way. So that is two quick principles from the book of Genesis. Human beings are the only ones tasked with taking care of everything that God made. And since the original creation was very good, taking care of it often means preserving it as it is. Going to move on a little bit and note that we often think of stewardship of creation as sort of an Old Testament matter. And we often associate creation with the first person of the Trinity, meaning the creed. We say, "I believe in God, the Father Almighty, Creator of heaven and earth." First line of our creed, we think of God, the Father, the first person of the Trinity, as the Creator of heaven and earth. But did you know that the New Testament tells us that Jesus Christ was there at the creation of the world? And that he was actively involved in what took place? Here it is, one more time. Share my screen. Call that up. Share it. It says, in the Gospel of John, "He," meaning Jesus Christ, "was in the beginning with God. All things came into being through him, and without him, not one thing came into being." And in Colossians, it says this, "In Christ, all things in heaven and on earth were created. All things have been created through him and for him." I don't want to overstep bounds because I'm just a poor New Testament professor. I don't deign to think of myself as a theologian, but I don't know that there would have been any problem with the creed in saying, "And I believe in Jesus Christ, God's only Son, our Lord, also the Creator of heaven and earth." It's in the New Testament anyway. So there we have a statement in the New Testament that Jesus Christ is the Creator of all that there is. And you may remember that it says again in Genesis that "the Spirit of the Lord moved over the face of the deep and at the time of creation." So this is a very trinitarian affair. The God whom we call Father, Son, and Holy Spirit is the Creator of all that we have. People who love God with all their heart, soul, and mind are called to love everything that God has made. And if this is, appeals to your particular piety, it does to mine, people who love Jesus are called to love everything that came into being through him and for him. I'm pretty big on loving Jesus. Maybe it comes from those days 50 years ago when I was a college student in love with Jesus. They called us Jesus freaks back then. I didn't mind, still don't mind. There's a story in John's Gospel right at the end where Jesus asks Peter three times, "Do you love me? Do you love me? Do you love me?" Pretty important to Jesus to have an answer to that question. And you know, Peter answers three times, "Yes, Lord, you know that I love you. Yes, I love you. Lord, you know that I love you." And how does Jesus answer him? He says, "Feed my sheep. Feed my lambs. If you love me, feed my sheep." Well, since I think of myself as a person who loves Jesus, and I certainly want to be a person who loves Jesus, I always pay a lot of attention to that passage and think, Jesus says, "If you love Him, He wants you to feed His sheep." We always take that metaphorically. Feed my sheep means take care of my followers. Be a good shepherd, the members of the church. And I'm certain that, of course, it means that. That's probably mostly what it means. But just between us, I've often wondered whether it might also refer to literal sheep. Jesus says, "If you love me, take care of everything that I made." I created sheep, you know? The sheep and the green pastures and the still waters and even the wolves. I created them all. Take care of everything that I made. If you love Jesus, make sure the sheep are okay. Make sure the green pastures stay green. Make sure the still waters stay pure. Take care of everything that He has made. Okay, well, if that particular brand of piety didn't appeal to you, we'll try another one. There's a fictitious story about Martin Luther that many people find meaningful. I do, even though I know it is not historical. It's no more accurate historical than that little tale about the Gauls I told you last week. You know, somebody just made this story up, and it does capture Luther's concern for being a responsible steward. According to the story, a student asked Martin Luther one time, "Dr. Luther, what would you do if you knew for certain that Christ would return tomorrow?" Luther thought a moment. And then he said, "I'd plant a tree." Well, that was a surprise. Taken back, the student said, "But Dr. Luther, what would be the point? I mean, if Christ was going to return tomorrow, why would you waste your time planting a tree?" And Luther said, "Well, if I knew Christ was coming back, I would like for Him to find me doing what I was left here to do." The fictitious Luther was probably thinking about this Bible passage. Again, from the book of Genesis, the Adam and Eve story. "The Lord God took the man and put him in the garden of Eden to till it and keep it." Did you know that about Adam and Eve? The reason God put human beings on the earth, according to this story, was to take care of the soil and the plants and whatever else God had made to till the garden, mulch it, protect it. See that the plants would grow up healthy and bear much fruit. Just as a side note, we should say that this was before that unfortunate incident that got the early humans expelled from the garden. I have to say that because sometimes people think that work, hard, outdoor, physical labor, like farming, was not part of the original plan. I mean, they think that if only there hadn't been that, you know, episode with the snake and the forbidden fruit, we would have all just sat around naked in the garden, you know, I don't know, eating the fruit from all the trees we're allowed to eat it from, and nobody would have ever had to do a lick of work, and that would have been paradise, not what the Bible says. The Bible indicates that work, or actually, to be specific, farming was part of paradise. Right there in the Garden of Eden, there was going to be a lot of work to do, plowing and tilling and harvesting, gardening, caring for God's creation. Part of paradise. Now, I'm going to take just a moment to look at some things that are very practical. I said I would give you a link, and here it is. Let me call this one up now. Takes me a moment to find this. Put it up here. Yeah, there it is. Share my screen. This website, it's a wonderful website. I want you all to know about. It's called Lutheran's Restoring Creation. You see that now? Thank you. Yes, I think so. And it's easy to find. It's at lutheransrestoringcreation.org. If you go to this website, Lutheran's Restoring Creation, oh my gosh, we had more time. I would just take half an hour to take you all the way through this website and show you all kinds of things that are here. There's things for congregations and individuals. I'm going to show you two things. Here where it says individuals, click on that. And then over on the side, it says devotional act resources. I click on that. And then I scroll down a little, and I get to this here. I click that. And if you didn't get enough Bible passages for this Bible study, look here, Bible passages about caring for creation. Bible passages about caring for creation. And there are 52 of them. I told you I could give you 52 passages, but I was going to give you a couple. Well, here's the 52, one for every week of the year. A wonderful way to guide your devotions in caring for creation with a Bible passage for meditation every week of the year. Now we're going to go back home again. And we're going to go down to individuals again. And you go over here and there's something called the personal for personal covenant with creation. Now, I'm going to want to show you that, but I have my own version that I printed out. So I'm going, this is a little bit more complicated to get it up. I have to stop sharing for a moment. Put that down, call. Where is my personal? Here it is. Here it is. I'm just not as savvy at this as some of these young folks are, but I get it done eventually, if you'll just bear with me. Now, I wanted to put that one down. I want to put this back up. And I want to share my screen again. Well, I did something wrong. I needed to get my screen back up big. There it is, now I can do it. Sorry for all that. And here it is, personal covenant with creation. I printed this off from that website. It's easier to read this way. And it lists all these different things that you might do to be a good caretaker of creation. And I just highlighted a few that happened to strike me, things that we've tried to do in our life. My dear wife, Missy Baby, is responsible for most of these. She made sure that we have purchased Energy Star appliances. When appliance goes bad and we need a new one, we pay attention to that. Clean and replace filters for all our appliances. Oh my goodness, she's always changing our filters every time I turn around and she changes them too. When not in use, turn off lights, TV, computer, appliances. Yes, try to have natural light as much as possible. Do not let water run while doing tasks. You know, you turn on the sink and then it's running and you run over to get something and it is, and you come back again. Just turn that sink off, run over and get, come back, turn it back on again. That's a very big deal here in Arizona because we are very concerned about running out of water in Arizona. It's probably not going to happen in my lifetime, but I also care about my children and my grandchildren. They might end up living here too. Wash the dishes and the laundry on full load. We don't run that washing machine until it's full. Buy fair trade products, locally produced products, sharpen the shop at those farmers markets, whatever you can. Avoid paper towels, cloth napkins, and handkerchiefs. So all four of our kids for Christmas, last Christmas, got courtesy of my dear wife, Missy Baby. They all got sets of cloth napkins so they would quit using paper towels as napkins or paper napkins. And they also got washable reusable towels. They're, they're not exactly, there's something in between paper and cloth. Anyway, you wash them and you can reuse them, I don't know, maybe 20 times. They don't hold up forever like a, you know, a cloth one would. But that's what all our kids got for Christmas last year. Buy less stuff that you'll have to throw away. Buy products with no packaging or less packaging. We sure do love Costco, but I tell you, they love packaging, don't they? Everything we get at Costco seems to be overly packaged. And I'd like to have some conversation with them about that sometime. But we don't use any of those bags at the grocery store anymore. We have bags that we carry in our car, in our trunk. And we go to the grocery store or any store, we carry the bag in, go around and fill them up. Purchase a car that gets high miles to the gallon and use that HOV lane when you're commuting to work. Carpool, have more than one person in the car, bicycle when you can. And we go on and on, I like this one. Take 10 minutes a day to enjoy or love nature. Just sit outside and pet your cat or whatever. Take moments to just enjoy nature. Okay, I'm going to go back now to my, my program, I wanted to share that with you. We could have spent the entire, entire time of our Bible study with that website alone. But it's there and you can look at it. I've heard it said that making people feel guilty about stewardship is like shooting fish in a barrel. Personally, I've never actually tried to shoot fish in a barrel. But my impression is that it is supposedly an easy thing to do. It is certainly easy to make people feel guilty about stewardship because none of us ever do as well as we might do. We always room for improvement. We always think that we could probably do better. But doing that only produces short-term commitment, kind of like those New Year's resolutions. You know, if you get to feeling bad that you're not doing as good a job on stewardship as you ought to, maybe you, you resolve to do better and sometimes maybe it sticks. It's worthwhile if it does, but sometimes it, sometimes it just ends up being short-term and then you slip back into the old habits again. And even if you don't, there's always so much more that you could do, always something else. And it's just overwhelming. It's easy to get frustrated, which is why I have tried to share in this study that we try to begin by focusing on the privilege of being chosen by God to care for God's creation, appointed by God to do this. It's a very high calling. We own it and we live into that identity and feel good about it. And in that regard, I want to say that stewards are almost always grateful people. We are grateful for all that God has given us and for the opportunity to care for God's world, to preserve it and make it a better place. Instead of being disgruntled over what we don't have, we are grateful for what we do have. Instead of being frustrated and disappointed with all the waste and pollution we see, we are excited about opportunities to conserve and purify and restore what is precious and beautiful. I've told my dear wife, Missy Baby, that when I die, I hope my last words will be, thank you. She asks, to whom will you be speaking? I don't know, to God or just to the world? Or maybe just to whoever happens to be around at the time? But I would like those to be my last words on this earth. I know I won't have much control over that. So I wrote a poem and I stuck it in my when I die box. Do you all have a when I die box? Well, I'm 70 and I plan to live another 20 years or so, but you know, who knows? So I got a box and gathered the papers and the passwords for the computer and stuff and tips and bits of advice, remember to tell the bishop and now things like that. Anyway, at the bottom of that box, I put a poem that I wrote. She hasn't seen it yet, maybe. Now, maybe she won't see it till then. And then she can do with it as she pleases. Here it is. Let me share this with you as we end. It's actually a song, except that I don't know how to write music. It's called Lucky Mud, a poem by Mark Allen Powell. A long time ago, the ancients say, God would sit and play with clay, piles of dirt and muck and crud. Nothing but God and lots of mud. For millions of years, a lonely Lord. And then at last our God got bored, took some slop and took some slime, mixed them together and said, it's time. Most of my mud has to stay on the ground, but this lucky mud gets to walk around. Lucky me, lucky mud. Earth and rain, flesh and blood. Lucky mud, lucky me. I'm so glad I got to be. God spoke to me when I was dirt. And then I was more or less alert. I got to work and I got to play, laugh and love and hope and pray. I got to hurt and I got to heal, taste and touch and think and feel. I got to hear and I got to see, eat and drink and poop and pee. I got to learn and I got to doubt, sing and dance and jump and shout. Lucky me, lucky mud. Earth and rain, flesh and blood. Lucky mud, lucky me. I'm so glad I got to be. Ashes to ashes, dust to dust. All things pass, all things must. But for a while, wasn't it great for mud to have such lucky fate? And that was it. I thank you. I am done, but we have time for some discussion, if you would like. I'm not quite sure how to do it. But I can see many of your faces. If you have a question, wave, you'll have to unmute, unmute, wave your hand and let me hear from you. Questions, thoughts, comments?
I was wondering if you had some comments about the, you were focusing on God declaring everything was, was very good.
Yes.
And us Lutherans and reformed churches are good at dwelling upon our depravity and our sinfulness.
Yes.
And just wondered if you had comments about that and how, how we balance that, the, the original goodness of God, but at the same time as you know Luther and, and our theology has, has emphasized what is wrong with us and our sinfulness.
Yes, I think Lutheran theology has actually done that more than Luther. Though it, you know, it's, it's, it is true that we are, that we are justified completely by grace and not through any merit of our own. That's fundamental to our theology and that is true. But we go overboard with it when we disparage the goodness of God's creation, which is always, we, we continue to be people made in the image of God. And even if creation is fallen and we are fallen and we are sinners, we are. Well, here's, here's what I find as a biblical professor. I'll sometimes hear the point being made, God loves us even though we are some, so completely, totally unlovable. We are such, we are such totally worthless beings with nothing lovable about us. But because God is so good, God loves us anyway. I think that's overstating it and in a way that's unfair to what scripture says. Scripture says that God, we are precious to God, that we are God's prized possession, that God loves us as the bridegroom loves his bride, that we are, we are lovely and lovable to God. Now, we grant that God sees something in us that perhaps we don't see in ourselves. But what God sees in us is nevertheless real and true. We are, we are essentially good. The world is essentially good. And you used the word balance, Kenneth, and perhaps that's it. You know, we, we, it would be, it's, it's certainly easy to kind of fall in the ditch on either side of that road. But affirming the goodness of humanity and of life and of the world, you know, we, we lose track of the fact that we are, you know, we are absolute, what we say in our confession of sin, that you know, we are, we are, we are completely sinful and in need of God's grace and unable to save ourselves. But Lutherans tend to wallow in the opposite, you know, the other ditch. And we can, I think we can go too far with that. And okay, that's what I have to say anyway. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Kenneth. Anybody, anyone with anything else to say, stewardship of creation? Anybody want to offer any suggestions that they have found in their own lives for being good stewards of creation?
I don't have any suggestions, but I have a question.
Oh, okay.
I love your take on Genesis one where it's, where you said that taking care of creation is uniquely gifted to humans.
Yes.
Our task. And as a preacher who tends to follow the lectionary, Genesis one doesn't roll around a whole bunch. Where are some other places we could make that point or share that insight with folks?
Gosh, I think, I want to go, I want to go back to those 52 passages on the website and read, and read through them. Because that's the one that really stands out for me where it's, humans are tasked for that. But is in, is in, you know, in Genesis. But surely there are, I, I think if you scroll through those passages, you will find any, a number of other passages where, for example, is the Israelites are tasked with letting, letting the land lie fallow every so often, the jubilee year. And also they will not, they will not exhaust the, the, the ground, you know, that occurred. There, there, there are numerous things like that that come up in the, in the scriptures. What are we are to, we, we are to be taking proper care of, of the, the good earth that God has, has given us. And so I, I think you'll find them without my trying to cite chapters and verses off the, off, off the top of my head. It's certainly what being a steward means. Being a steward means not, you know, just that we get to live off of the earth, but that we take care of the earth that we are, that we are, that we are allowed to use. And one reason I wanted to quote that passage is because you might not even know this, but for, for decades, if not centuries, the verse was quoted as having dominion over the earth basically meant that we can do whatever we want with the earth. It's almost the opposite of what it means. Rather than because that God has tasked us to take care of what God has made, people would say, human beings have dominion over the earth, which means it's ours to do with as we please. But it just, it, it very clearly doesn't mean that, and yet it did get quoted in that way, frequently. We could exploit the environment because God has, God has given us this world to exploit and use as in whatever way, you know, we, whatever way we find beneficial to us. I don't know if you ever encountered that bad theology or not. You probably still can find it in certain books in Christian bookstores or something, but I don't encounter it. It's the same, the same folks that have prosperity theology, you know, about, you know, your.
I wonder sometimes if that's most people's operational theology.
Yeah.
Whether we put it in words or not.
It may be.
This is mine and it's, it's mine.
It, it may be, but there definitely was an era where it was what was taught by theologians in the church.
There's a question in the chat that I don't know if you can see. Karen Littley asks, how to counteract the despair of young people? Many who are avoiding having children. Many who are avoiding having children because of severe climate concerns. I didn't want you to miss it.
Yes, no, you're right. I don't see those in the chat. I see that there's this thing down at the bottom of the screen, but I'm just, you know, I'm just trying to keep track of so many things. I missed that. Um, so if you do have a question, other than just putting it in the chat, feel free to shout it out. Uh, well, it's just tragic that they have that concern, but it's in some ways understandable. Uh, you don't quite know how to respond to it, but I think if somebody were to tell me, I don't, we don't wanna bring children into the world because we're afraid with climate change and all that's happening with the environment, the world will not be a good place for them to live. Well, the other side to that is your children might be ones that can help to make the world a better place to live. And, uh, what we, what I would like to do is, I mean, there may be, there may be any number of reasons why you wouldn't want to have children, but I would, I don't think that should be the reason to not have children. Because you could simply say, we are, we, we do wanna have children and we are going to raise up children who will be good stewards of the earth and help to make the world a safer and better place to live. And, you know, that's, uh, that can be our calling to being salt of the earth and light of the world, that we're, we're going to do what we can. Though recognizing that it might not be as pleasant a place to live as it was for earlier generations. And, but, uh, we, you know, we, we, we have a missional aspect to it. That, uh, right? Yeah, that's, that's the best answer I would have for that. More, it's just, it's just sad and tragic that young people think that way. My generation, though, um, I knew a lot of folks in the sixties that didn't want, said they were never wanted to have children because they were going to nuclear, there was gonna be nuclear war and we were gonna blow ourselves up. You know, you don't wanna bring up, you don't wanna bring, you don't wanna have, raise children in a world that's on the verge of nuclear destruction. So, that, that danger, by the way, has not gone away completely, but we're probably think more in terms of most apocalyptic scenarios now have more to do with ecology than, uh, and, uh, nuclear war. Uh, but also, I guess I'd just say faith is, we have faith that it is God's world and God will, God will care for our world and use us to care for it. Uh, anyone else, others? Maybe was there anything else in the chats? I see chats here. Uh, now I see that one. Right, okay, I don't see other questions. Anybody else got anything? Other concerns, questions or tips for us? Something that you have done that, uh, would help us to, uh, do a better job of caring for creation? If not, I'm at four fifty-one, uh, seven fifty-one your time. I think we could end. And, uh, I think I would say that I will be the last one to log off. Because sometimes I find there's somebody that wanted to ask me something that they didn't wanna ask for the whole group. So, uh, if that's the case, or you have something personal you want to say to me, I will, uh, I will bid you all a fond farewell, but I will also stay online as long as there's anybody else online. All right? Thank you all, and I will see you probably one week from today. Thank you.
Thank you.